Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. Tonight, the board has two presentations.
Chairwoman?
I'm sorry, yes.
If I made point of order, yeah. If we can just announce the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Yes, thank you, sorry about that.
Not a problem.
Clerk of the Board, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated, Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 with the Office of the County Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. So tonight, we have two presentations. For the first presentation of the evening, the Board of County Commissioners would like to give out certificates to recipients of scholarship winners who are present with us today, which was presented by the New Jersey Association of Counties Foundation and their Board of Trustees. This year, they have graciously awarded scholarships to 2024 Union County Vocational Technical Graduates all across the state who plan to continue their education in the fall at either a county college or a state college or university. I would also like to recognize John Donadio, Executive Director of NJAC, Walt Smolneski, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, as well as David Vitale of Amazon, Joe Greco of AT&amp;T, and Pat Cohen of SJI Utilities, who are all joining us here tonight. The following students that I'm naming here right now are unable to be with us tonight, but we would still like to recognize Danielle Rodriguez Lopez, who will be attending Rutgers University and is receiving a $1,000 scholarship courtesy of Amazon; Ayan Zia, who will be attending the New Jersey Institute of Technology, is being awarded a $1,000 scholarship from Broadcom VMware; Emma Yushka Ajes Ramshanath, who will be attending the New Jersey Institute of Technology, was awarded $250 from the SHI International Corporation. I would now like to call upon my Commissioner colleague, Al Mirabella, to join me at the microphone, as well as, if they would so like to join us, John, Walt, Dave, Joe, and Pat. Please come forward as we present our other certificates. Okay, so for our first recipient, who is here today, we have Arav Joshua Khodali. Come on forward. He will be attending Rutgers University and will receive $1,000 from AT&amp;T. Our next recipient is Savannah Morrow Quinn. Savannah will attend Rutgers University and is receiving $1,000 from South Jersey Industries. And last but not least, Kalina Suarez. Kalina will also be attending Rutgers University and is receiving $900 courtesy of PSENG. Before we take a picture, I wanted to turn it over to my colleague, Commissioner Mirabella, for a few words.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. One of the great things about NJAC, the New Jersey Association of Counties, and John Donato is the Executive Director, is getting scholarships and working with great companies that give back to the community and rewarding these great students that are going on to county schools or state schools in our state. And it's really a pleasure to be here, representing a little bit of NJAC too, because I am on the Foundation Scholarship Board and the Executive Board at NJAC. And I'm doubly proud today to be here and see these students that have such great futures ahead of them. Great, I'm gonna ask John Donato if he would say a few words too. John?
Thank you, sir. I'm happy to do that. Again, John Donadio with the New Jersey Association of Counties, and just want to first thank Commissioner Mirabella, who again is an executive member of the New Jersey Association of Counties and a new member to our Board of Trustees, which this year alone, due to the generosity of the gentlemen that are here today and their companies, we're giving away over $90,000 statewide to county vocational technical school graduates. For us, it's really important that they're continuing their education right here in the great state of New Jersey. And I can tell you that every year, the candidates of students that we get just get more and more impressive. And I feel really bad about myself, because I barely graduated high school. I had to take a typing class in order to graduate. So I see some of the resumes here, and it's just incredible. You guys did a fantastic job. So thank you to all of the companies that are here today and their continued generosity. Congratulations to the students, most importantly, and to their families, and we wish you the best of luck. So, thank you.
Okay. And for our second presentation tonight, the Board of County Commissioners is proud to recognize a group of students who have earned scholarships for this year's Summer Theater Camp, hosted by Theatrical Arts Prep and the Union County Performing Arts Center. This scholarship program was initially launched as part of Commissioner Granados's 2023 initiatives, building a stronger Union County. Last year, I was so amazed by the exceptional talent and the incredible opportunities it offered for these students to develop their skills and shine on stage. Inspired by its success, I decided to continue the program this year under my 2024 initiatives, growing together in Union County. This year, we have awarded a total of 21 scholarships to gifted students from across Union County. These scholarships cover all camp costs, ensuring that financial constraints do not hinder their artistic aspirations. The camp held at the Hamilton Stage will feature professional guidance as students perform two productions, Junie B. Jones for our eight- to 12-year-olds, and Mean Girls for our students ages 13 through 18. I'm very excited to see both of those shows, I have to tell you. We would like to extend our gratitude to Deanna Hunt, the Director of UC PAC, and Sam Han Simpson, the owner and artistic director of Theatrical Arts Prep, for their support and leadership. Their dedication to developing artistic expression has significantly contributed to the success of these students. So at this point, I would like to ask Commissioner Granados, as well as our Vice Chairwoman, Lourdes León, to join me in front, and we are going to give out our certificates. We are also joined here by Deanna Hunt, who, as I said, is our Director at the UC PAC. Today, we are presenting certificates to our scholarship recipients, which celebrate their dedication, hard work, and outstanding talent, all of which promise a bright future for the performing arts. So on behalf of the County Commissioners, I want to wish you great success for the remainder of the month. And I know I said it, and I know my colleagues are going to share as well how excited we are to see your show, because if it's anything like last year, you guys were top-notch. So we cannot wait to see the shows this year. Sergio, would you like to say something? And then we'll go down the line.
Sounds good. Well, I had a sneak peek yesterday, and I'll tell you right now, you have to go no further than Union County, New Jersey, sees some amazing talent. So many times, you talk about going to Broadway, New York City, but right here in our hometown, we have such amazing youth, such amazing talent. Let's continue to make sure we invest, as the Chairwoman is doing this year, with these scholarships. And we thank each one of you, because we really can't wait. And I also want to acknowledge Open Space for helping run this program, including Director Victoria Durbin Drake, Angelica Sedeno, and Maria also. Thank you very much.
I'm really excited about this. And I just can't wait to see the shows. So much talent here, nothing better than the arts. And I'm gonna get a lot of autographs after the show, right? Okay, looking forward, guys.
Yes, please?
Yep, thanks. On behalf of the UC PAC and Theatrical Artists Prep, I'm Deanna Hunt, the Executive Director at the UC PAC. I just want to again thank the Commissioners for supporting the arts. And thank you to last year's Chair, Granados, for recognizing the importance of the arts and starting this program. And thank you to Madam Chair, Paul Mary Muded, who recognized the importance as well and is continuing this amazing program. And so we have 21 very talented students that were awarded scholarships among very numerous. We had a number of applicants. So be very proud, parents of your children, and thank you for supporting them and helping them with their applications. I also want to thank Vicki Durbin and Angelica Sedeno. They're the ones that orchestrated the scholarship program and put it together. And without their help, we wouldn't have gotten it out to the community. So I really do appreciate how they work with us on a regular basis. And again, thank you to the parents for getting your children there every day, from Monday through Friday. These students are working very hard for the month of July to put on two amazing performances. As was mentioned, these children are from the age of eight to 16, and where you will be seeing Junie B. Jones Jr. and also Mean Girls. And the shows are Friday and Saturday, July 26th and July 27th. At 3:00 PM is Junie B. Jones, and the Mean Girls is at 7:00 PM on those same dates. Tickets are available at ucpac.org. Please encourage everyone here to come and see not one, but both shows, and see them twice. And I just want to thank all of you again. You're our stars of the future, and we are all so very proud of you. Thanks.
Thank you. So what we're going to do now is we will call you up based on the certificate here. If for some reason you are here and your name is not called, it was just a miscommunication between whether we knew you were coming or not, but we have your certificate. So just let us know. Come up for the picture, and then we will get you that certificate at the end. So our first student is Sophia Zuniga. And if you don't mind staying up here so we could take a picture? Congratulations. Our next student is Joseph Estevez. Our next student, Mia Rico. Jordan Benedicto. Isabella Ovalas. Zoe Givens. Leila Karoflis. Milliano Smith. Jaylen Worldles. Sophia Rivas. Gabriela Garcia. Natalie Fassak. Gabriela Marquez. Daniella Marquez. Eliana Galeo Xavier. And Phoenix Lacovera. If there's no one else, right, that didn't get their name called? Okay, so we're gonna just take a quick picture.
There you go, there you go. All right, guys, so I'm gonna count to three, and I want you to hold your smile as long as possible, because all of your families want to take the same picture. Ready? One, two, three. We've never seen that many cameras before. You guys are surely stars.
They're getting ready, they're gonna get ready for opening night.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you so much. We're good, yes. Thank you, guys, so much.
And as Deanna said, go get your tickets, because the shows will be fantastic. Sure, go ahead.
Hello? My name is Robert Lacovera, my daughter is Phoenix, and I just wanted to, I know everybody threw out all those thank yous, but as a citizen of Scotch Plains, New Jersey, I love Union County, I love everything about this county. I've never seen any of you before in my life, but I know that you're here working for us. Whatever it is that you're doing, thank you for doing it, and we appreciate you so very much, because not only my daughter, but all of these children, they shine so brightly. And it's because of this giving that you are receiving. We all are. So again, I just want to thank you all and thank my children, because it's fantastic.
Thank you. We will adopt the communication. Yes, at this time, we are going to begin our regular meetings, so if you want to head out, you can head out. We'll give you a minute, unless you want to stay. You never know. Thank you. I think I'm good, I left it there. Yeah, it is. Which show are you in? Junie B. Jones, okay. Oh, I cannot wait to see it. And your first name again? Leila, okay, I'll be looking for you. Thank you, thanks so much for coming. Thank you, thank you so much, thanks for coming. Are you, which show are you in? Junie B. Jones, I cannot wait, I cannot wait. Have a good night, thank you. Okay. Okay, we will adopt the communications and the June minutes during tonight's regular meeting. At this time, I will first call upon our Deputy County Clerk, Clara Fernandez, who is representing the County Clerk's office.
Can you hear me now? Okay, we have four items for your consideration. I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Office of the Union County Prosecutor, First Assistant Prosecutor, James Tanzi, will be here to represent the department.
Evening Commissioners, County Council. We have two items on the agenda for tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Board of Taxation, County Council Bruce Bergen, will be representing the department.
Thank you, Chair. The Board of Taxation has a single resolution. I'll be happy to answer any questions from the Board.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Bruce, I don't know if you know this, but a 10-year contract's pretty long with the County of Monmouth. Are they always that long?
Yes, in this case, this is a shared service agreement where the County of Monmouth has a computer program that a number of other counties share as well. And in fact, we've been using it since 2012. This is a 10-year renewal, and we essentially pay a set fee and then a per-appeal fee. So this is a not-to-exceed amount. This may not be what we spent over 10 years. It depends how many tax appeals get filed.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Department of Administrative Services, Laura Scutari.
Good evening. The Department of Administrative Services has two resolutions on the agenda. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Department of Economic Development, Deputy County Manager and Director, Amy Crispwagner.
Good evening. The Department of Economic Development has four resolutions for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Deputy County Manager, can you elaborate on number three, please, and just give us a little bit more about that?
Yes, absolutely. This project in Raway will be a 52-unit, excuse me, 58-unit new construction. 35 of those units will be receiving this $7 million to help fund them as affordable housing. We get about $1.3 to $1.5 million every year for the Home Investment Partnership Program. We go out to bid every year, and we just really haven't gotten any good quality projects that we felt could meet the home guidelines, because it's very strict, they have to remain affordable for a specific amount of time. The residents have to be recertified. It's a challenging program to administer. But this project, we're very excited about. So we haven't awarded any money, which is why we have $7 million to give this project, but we're very excited to see it come to fruition, and we know that we have a significant issue with lack of affordable housing, really all over the country, but also most especially here in Union County. So we're excited to have a project of this quality coming before us.
That's great. And how many, you said how many units of affordable housing?
It's 58 units, 35 of them will be affordable. They'll be funded through the Home Investment Partnership Program.
That's wonderful, thank you. Any additional? Okay, thank you. Department of Engineering, Public Works and Facilities Management, Joe Polakay, Acting Director.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Department of Engineering, Public Works and Facilities has 13 resolutions. Be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Bodak.
Director number six. Director number six. Approximately when would the work start, and how long is it anticipated to take?
Just as soon as we, maybe the work will start in maybe two months. It'll take between a year and a year and a half for completion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Finance, Kathy Campanella, who is our reimbursement director.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. The Department of Finance has 14 resolutions for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Department of Human Services, Director Debbie Ann Anderson.
Good evening, Chair members of the Board. The Department of Human Services has six, I'm sorry, 10 resolutions on, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Director, how are you? When we were going through this earlier, there's so many great partners that we have listed here. Just kind of curious, off the top of your head, is there like an approximate number of residents that you know utilize those organizations? I know that's probably a tough one to answer.
It is tough, but I could say through the funding of the Board and all the community partners that's listed on this agenda and throughout our human service network in the county, we're servicing, I would say, a quarter of the residents of the population is over 600,000 residents. Most of them are going through our Gateway Y and other nonprofit partners throughout the county, so a third, over 200,000.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Department of Parks and Recreation, our Director, Vicki Durbin Drake.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The Department of Parks and Recreation has one item on the agenda, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Office of the County Council, County Council Bruce Bergen.
Thank you, Chair. County Council. County Council has two resolutions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Office of the County Manager, Deputy County Manager, Amy Wagner.
Yes, Commissioners, the Office of the County Manager has one resolution for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All laudatory resolutions and resolutions of condolence are from the entire board. Are there any comments from my colleagues? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.